I'd like to call this meeting of the Festus City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Collier.
Here.
Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Here.
Councilman Weiner.
Here.
Councilman Tenon.
Here.
Councilman Dennis.
Here.
Ledigal agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bills total one million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hu- or six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-two cents.
So moved, but slow down, Greg. That's a lot of money.
It's been three weeks instead of two.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Motion passes. Before we get to remarks, visitors, I would like to, uh, ensure that those speaking under remarks of visitors, uh, understand you have a five-minute limit. So let's get to remarks of visit- visitors, Mrs. Pfizer. Could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Jennifer L. Feazer, F.I.E.S.C.R., seven thirty-three Woodland Avenue, Fussis, Missouri, six three oh two eight. Okay, and we have the animal control come out a couple of weeks ago before I had a hip replacement done. He got the snake off the deck that came across the street from that house that burnt down. And when I went to the building department the other day when I was riding the bike, I said, there's just a foul odor coming from that place. Well, they sent the officers over. There was somebody else called the police. It was not me. I did not call. And, um, apparently they could smell it too. Officer Young, I think it wasn't another officer. But I was just wondering, where's this house standing at? I mean, is it going to be condemned? It's already been, um, it's an eyesore. I mean, we're getting bugs, I'm getting snakes. I don't like it. And, you know, I mean, it's just, it's an eyesore and we got people that moved in and it's just, I was just wondering where it stands at. I'm talking about, um, seven twenty-five South, uh, Mill Street. That's the house I'm talking about.
North Mill?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm sorry, yes, North Mill, you guys, yes. So, I mean, it's just a really bad eyesore. I mean, it's just ridiculous. So, they've been, I heard that somebody told me that, one of my neighbors told me they talked to a Tim Schneider, or whatever his name is, and he apparently is in the works of getting the thing condemned. But I don't know where that stands. I mean, it just, they need to get in and start cleaning that stuff out. All that wood underneath there and everything, it's just a mess.
I can just say briefly that, uh, code enforcement has turned that over to, uh, the prosecutor. Uh, so it's in court. Uh, I don't know if there's a date set yet, Brian?
Yes, there's a, uh, there's a prosecution of the owner for violation of the city's code enforcement or, uh, code violations, uh, and that's set for September seventeenth.
September seventeenth?
Yes.
I'll be up there in Hillsborough. It's gonna be in Hillsborough?
Yes, and you're welcome to come. They're frequently, there's not a disposition.
I'll get everybody behind me, yeah.
Okay, I just want you to be clear, there frequently isn't a disposition on the first court date.
Okay.
Uh, if he needs more time to get an attorney or to consider his options or to request a trial, then, um,
That just has to go.
Understood.
Okay, well, thank you, Brian. Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Mike Tople.
I do not see him in the crowd.
I don't need it. Kyle Wilkie.
Good deal. Um, hello, my name's Kyle Wilkie. Um, some of you might know me from being on the council. Um, those of you that don't know me, um, I'm Kyle Wilkie. I served on Ward Two. Um, you probably read about me in The Leader. Um, I had the chickens. Um, that article had some things that were a little false. By the way, I've been, um, in contact with the leader to talk about that, um, also. Um, moving forward, I know I only have five minutes, so I'll just go ahead and get to the point. I'm here about the flowerpots on Main Street, but really it's a bigger, broader concern, um, for me, for us as a city to kind of look within and see places where we can do better. And I feel like, um, general landscaping, upkeep, code enforcement, those things, um, we can definitely do better on. Um, I know from my time on council, we had lots of issues with that. I know that, um, from being here today, we had something with that, um, because someone just spoke. So I think that, um, that all starts within, and we can't ask for people to comply with our code enforcement if we as a city are not actually doing, following that code and doing those things. And I say that because we do have some areas with, um, overgrown weeds on sidewalks, you know, not only is that a safety issue, I would think, or maybe a liability, um, as well for the city, but it's also, um, just a little bit for me, like, if we're not taking care of our streets, sidewalks, landscapes, flowerpots that we bought, bought that made a big article in the small-town paper, um, I remember reading it as a young, a young person. Um, I think that it's important that we focus on maintaining those things and keeping up with them. There's lots of reasons why I say this. Um, I didn't have time to give, like, statistics or research and show things up on the smartboard or whatever this is, like, I would typically do in a presentation like this. Um, however, I think we get the point. Um, and I think, I hope that some of you got my email. I only got, I think, three responses. Um, so if you're able to check your email, maybe, um, respond to that, just so I know you got it. I used to tell that to my seventh graders. Um, I know that transitioning into technology can sometimes be difficult, but, um, I think that it's also important to check that communication, um, and try to respond on time, you know, like I tell my volunteers that I interview now. Um, so, so that it doesn't reflect poorly on you and that we can get stuff moving as a city. Um, I know that I didn't always do my best as a councilman enough timing when we're getting back to, um, emails for whatever reason, but I think it's important that we check those emails and read them. That's a little, another sidebar. How much time do I have left?
Two fifteen.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, going back to the flowerpots, I know there's been history with the flowerpots. I'm aware of some of the inner dealings, workings, drama, maybe small-town things, I don't know what it is. Um, but the bottom line is they've been in town for two years, and as a city can do better, and we should be doing better. Um, you know, it's the small things that make a city places where people want to travel and visit. Um, I'm fortunate enough to have been able to travel locally in other cities and, um, you know, you can really tell the cities that they want people coming back and want people to spend time in their spaces. And I think that we're lacking on that as a city, and I don't want to point blame to anyone on that. I just want to, um, show that we can do better and that I'm a willing partner to help do better. Um, you know, I'm no master gardener, but I did do the Mizzou certification. You know, there's ways that we can do things, um, that are easy, cheap, water-tolerant, and then even from a larger standpoint, from a city standpoint, you know, I've heard complaints about standing water, you know? You can plant things that will have long enough roots to combat that standing water. There's certain things you can do. Um, so I think as a city moving forward, it's important to realize that some of those small things, um, do make a big difference, even if it's twelve flowerpots on Main Street. Um, there's opportunities for community engagement, lots of things like that. Um, but will also spill over into other areas, like homeowners may be taking more responsibility of their yard and keeping up with things. Um, and that's just, you know, where my head's at with that. I feel like it's, some of that's, um, kind of basic, but not everyone might think of it in that way. Um, so that being said, I think that it's something, um, that should be talked about. I know we have different organizations in town that do different things, um, but as, as the ones with our name on it and as the ones that call ourselves the city of progress, I think that it's important we start looking into those things. Um, even when I was on council, what's it been four years? I don't even know how long time tends to, uh, move pretty quickly these days, but, um, we were having those same talks and it felt like a blame or put it on this, or they're supposed to do that, but I think at the end of the day, it, it's a matter of everyone working together. So thank you for listening, and it was great to see you and, um, see some familiar faces, uh, Michelle, um, all you gentlemen, um, good to see you, and thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yep.
If, if I could just add something now for a second. Um, hey, Kyle, Kyle, um, if you would consider, um, being maybe the, the ramrod, you know, the person that, uh, you know, as far as getting some plants and flowers and so on down there because of your expertise with plants, I'd, I'd be happy to help you.
Okay, great.
Because, um, um, I agree that, you know, sometimes it's the small things that fester into a bigger thing into a bigger thing, and it does, uh, have a, a connotation of pride with it also.
Correct.
So maybe we can talk afterwards and, and dip the ball rolling a little bit.
Yes, um, I have another appointment tonight, but I'm available. Call, text, email at any time. I think I added my phone number. I'll go ahead and state it here. Three one four, five six zero seven three one five, um, for that as well.
I will be in touch.
All right, thank you. And I, to, to your point, I want to say, you know, it, I, I would love to be that person and I can be that person, but I've got to have city, the city backing me on that and, and showing that they're willing.
We'll see what you can do. Okay, thank you.
Moving right along, we'll go to bids on the fire department for a door prop purchase. Chief. I'm gonna do that. Rookie. I gotta find my thing in here. Did you put it in there, Liam?
Oh, wow. Would you like me to read it, chief?
Yeah. Hey, I'm. Yes, when it comes to technology, I am. There we go. Chief, chief will bail me out over here. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I come before you tonight to ask about purchasing a door prop. Um, as we talked in previous, uh, council meetings about working on the house next door and that, um, in our line of work, it's hard to get, uh, things to actually practice our, um, trade on. Um, there's not many people that are willing to give up their doors and their houses and that for us to kick them down and stuff like that. Um, so, uh, we, we've, for the last two years, we've been looking for a prop that would work best to train our, our men and women to do their job. Um, so after looking, um, we found this door prop that I present to you tonight. It's not only a door prop, but it has an add-on feature to it uh, that will allow us to simulate cutting padlocks, um, rebar, so if there's, uh, businesses or houses that have rebar or bars protecting windows, it'll allow our men and women to practice with the saws cutting them. Um, there is money, uh, uh, train officer Peters had money in her line item budget for it. Uh, some of it was earmarked for some schooling this year, um, but, uh, schooling attendance was down a little bit, uh, so that she does have, uh, money in her line item, uh, the twenty-two, twenty-two hundred fifty-seven, zero, one, zero. Um, so I'd like to propose to the, uh, council, uh, for the purchase of the, uh, East Coast, uh, rescue solution door prop for eighty-one fifty, plus the add-on prop of twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, so a total cost of ten thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for that prop. All right, thank you, chief. Are there any discussion?
Quick question, chief. You said that the school, uh, attendance or training wasn't utilized, so if we take that out, will you find some good training for the rest of the year, two months, three months? Is that gonna hinder the department?
No, because that don't spend all of her line item, so we still, uh, and, and we do have some stepped up, um, if have put in for classes. Most of them, uh, we've had the luxury, most of the classes this year that our firefighters have tended, attended, have been free through the Division of Fire Safety and Other Grant Program. So that helped offset some of that cost that we would normally pay, but there's still money in her line item. We're not, we're not gutting her budget to sacrifice in-person training for this training prop.
That's all I want to know, because I don't think ten thousand would kill the city so we can keep training going.
No, I appreciate it.
How soon would you see that, once it's approved?
Uh, I honestly, I don't know, um, it's not a, a long lead time like fire trucks and other fire equipment, but I honestly couldn't tell you. Um, it, it sounded like it wouldn't be long. Uh, uh, train officer Peters did all the, the groundwork, so I didn't actually talk to the business, but I wouldn't think it'd be very far out. Probably a month to six weeks, probably. Okay. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the bid from East Coast Rescue Solutions Door Prop for a total of ten thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Public Works. Well eight pump replacement and well ten pump refer to ref- refurbishment.
Good evening, council. Uh, you'll remember on this, I had brought pump ten up for refurbishment or replacement a few months ago. Uh, right after that happened, something happened at pump eight. We're thinking that possibly a lightning strike, and it took it out completely. And so we put together a new packet, sent it out to bid, and put both of them together to make sure that both of our backup pumps were not down at the same time. And so this is the pricing and bids that we've received from that, with Flynn being the lowest. So, we had originally planned for well ten to be inspected and have refurbishment done, but since then, well ten experienced power surge, which made, which made the pump system inoperable. Uh, to ensure that both pumps were fixed and the downtime could be planned accordingly, both pumps were packaged into this request for proposals. The work for both sites will include inspection of pump equipment, pump testing, rebuild of the bowl, replacement of the motor, cable replacement, and site restoration. Uh, you'll see in the budget considerations, we had the seventy thousand that we had set aside for well ten, and with well eight being an unknown, uh, I've talked with Michelle about a budget amendment to address it.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Um, Greg, wouldn't insurance cover a lightning strike? And don't we, stupid question, forgive me if I'm totally way out of bounds. Don't we have surge protectors that offer, like, assistance and warranty? Do we need to upgrade that?
No. We don't have surge protectors.
Oh, okay, so, insurance, wouldn't insurance offer coverage on that on a lightning strike? Reimbursement for the city?
We can't ascertain as to whether it was a, a power surge on power being served to the pump or if it was a lightning strike. We know there was uh, an electrical event that did cause the, the pump to need to be, uh, repaired.
Okay, so back to my stupid question. Should we do something for surge protection in the future? How my little brain works? Can't there be something we can do?
There is surge protection down there. It is, uh, it would be about twelve years old at this point, and they do fail. And so I think the for pump eight, it was replaced in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand twelve, and now in twenty twenty-four. So it looks like we get about twelve years out of it, and then it seems to be unprotected after that.
So, we're gonna get new surge protection since we're doing this?
Yes.
Is it possible we implement a inspection program where we start looking at this every two years, three years, so this doesn't happen, if we know?
The well pumps are inspected at least monthly by Jim Tyndall.
I, I'm, bad choice of words. So, can we mark on a calendar that our surge protector is this old, and when it gets this old, hey, time to buy a new one? Is that, like, unreasonable?
So part of that is having to remove the entire entirety of the portion installed six hundred feet down. And so the cost of it can be pretty prohibitive, and so that is why a lot of communities plan for replacement after a particular period of years, rather than, uh, having the money to call someone out. They have to crane it out, pull out the piping, and check it and do refurbishment, and in that time, it's typically that it has to be replaced. And so, it can be very cost-prohibitive to get that into the, I guess, details of the surge protection. Uh, as part of this contract, I did put a two-year warranty on top of whatever assurances would come with the mechanical parts. And so we'll have that as well as, uh, Flynn Drilling has reached out with an offer for a maintenance program. They have not given me pricing on anything, though, so I cannot speak to whether it would be worth the amount that they are going to charge.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid by Flynn Drilling Company for seventy thousand dollars.
Well, actually, we'd qualify that. So there's a difference between the refurbishment and the replacement. It's only three thousand dollars. The Flynn proposal is one twenty-one, one ninety-eight on well ten. Is that correct?
Yes, and so that would be the one twenty-one, one ninety-eight in the bid breakdown for Flynn, and then the fifty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-nine for well eight.
You want to do, um, we could just do some math quick. Get one replace.
I put that in the contract and I didn't put that on the staff report, did I?
Okay. And one seventy-three and forty-seven dollars. Yeah. Is what the number on the contract is. So, that would be the motion needed to accept the bid.
Hundred and seventy-three thousand.
And forty-seven.
Okay. Uh, we'll need to approve the bid from Flynn Drilling Company for hundred and seventy-three thousand forty, forty-seven dollars. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Motion passes. We also have a bid for our, uh, operations and maintenance facility, SWP P.P.
So the city of Festus is allowed to discharge stormwater under the MS four permit that is held by Jefferson County. To ensure compliance with that permit, communities need to have a operations and maintenance plan for facilities that will have stormwater runoff. Uh, Intuition Logic have a background in creating operations and maintenance plans, and were chosen from the engineering on-call, and they provided the fee breakdown for eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and seven cents.
We're not gonna do it, Mike. Ask, ask Jason how Chris was doing. Oh, I bet. It's a must-have.
I will, uh, is there any discussion? I will entertain a motion that we approve the bid from Intuition and Logic Proposal for eleven thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars and seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinances and resolutions. Tonight, we have bill forty-seven eighty-two on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven eighty-two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, enacting a new section to be numbered two one zero point one one four zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus regarding camping on public property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven eighty-two is now open for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we were asked to draft this ordinance. This is an ordinance that prohibits individuals from sleeping or camping on public sidewalks, rights of ways, streets, or public property within the city. Um, it provides, as does the ordinance that we prepared a few months back about, um, setting hours of operation for all city-owned property. Uh, this provides that, uh, an individual who's found to be in violation of this should be given an opportunity to relocate prior to being issued a citation or uh, or being arrested, and also if it's determined that this individual has no other place to go, that there to be provided a list of resources, uh, in the area, including, um, crisis shelters and homeless shelters. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion? Is there any council member that would like this bill carried forward to the next meeting? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven eighty-two for the second time and title only?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-seven eighty-two for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven eighty-two, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, enacting a new section to be numbered two one zero point one one four zero of the quote, Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus regarding camping on public property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and establishing an effective date.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven eighty-two has passed. We also have bill forty-seven eighty-three on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven eighty-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, enacting new sections to be numbered three two zero point zero six zero and three two zero point zero seven zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus regarding moving traffic violations or speeding within a construction zone or work zone, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven eighty-three is now open for discussion. Can I have a staff report?
Mr. Mayor, we were asked to prepare this ordinance, uh, by the police department. Um, there've been, they've issued a number of traffic violations for, uh, speeding, uh, including speeding in work zones lately, and in reviewing our city code, it was determined that, uh, uh, the code did, there's not a separate offense for speeding in a, in a work zone or a construction zone as opposed to speeding in violation of what the posted speed limit is. So we drafted this ordinance to mirror the state statutes prohibiting, um, speeding in a construction zone or work zone, uh, and providing for enhanced penalties for, um, uh, for violations thereof. Uh, this ordinance also creates the offense of endangerment of a highway worker in a construction zone or work zone. There are a number of different ways in which, um, a person can violate that ordinance. Uh, essentially, it's, it's driving in a, in a reckless or, um, Uh, essentially it's, it's driving in a, in a reckless or, um. Or with excessive speed, uh, throughout a work zone or a construction zone in a way that endangers the health or welfare of, uh. Of someone working in the work zone. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Bill forty-seven eighty-three is now open for discussion.
Brian, would this be the, a lot of times you see double fines to work zone type situation?
So there is a, uh, there is a provision that says that, um, for the enhanced fine to apply. Uh, there does need to be a sign posted that says this is a construction zone and, and. There is a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine for speeding or passing in this work zone. Um, you can still be charged with. Speeding in violation of the, uh. Construction zone speed limit, uh, but you're not going to be subject to the enhanced penalty unless there is signage posted reflecting that.
So would that be on us or MoDOT or?
It would depend on who's in control of the work session. If it's a MoDOT work session that, uh, work, um. Uh, work zone, then they may be the ones responsible for posting it. And like I said, it, you can still. Uh, our police department could still cite you for going over the speed limit and you could still be given a ticket and you'll have to go to court or pay it. Um, but for the enhanced penalties to apply, they'll have to, uh, post the signage. Um, typically that will be noted on the ticket, um, that is filed in court, whether the signage was posted.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Um, quick question. Whenever I'm out on, uh, the interstate highways. Normally in those really bad traffic areas where there's a lot of construction going on, you'll see maybe State Patrol or, uh. Local police or sheriffs, something like that. And I don't believe. When I'm approaching, at least from the north, I don't come up from the south too often, but are there any police with lights, uh, just cars? Trying to slow people down before they get in, into this area?
Probably a question for chief.
A lot of times that falls under the actual construction company out there that's working. They will contract normally through the Highway Patrol or the Sheriff's Office because they have jurisdiction over the whole highway. They will pay them overtime to just come out and sit at the beginning of the work zone with their lights on. That is not anything that we are currently doing. Um, what this would do would allow our officers who are working out on the interstate to write these enhanced penalties through the city. Rather than having it to write them through state court.
Very good.
The officer sitting at the entrance of those construction zones is normally paid for by the construction company themselves.
Okay, very good. Um, so if we had someone, if the, um, whoever it is that's overseeing this, we're paying someone. And perhaps slowing people down. Um, this code may, that we just passed may not need to be enforced nearly as much as it is. And it would be a safety concern too. To get people to slow down. So is there, is there something that we could, uh, someone we could contact? In order to see if we could have, uh, police with, with lights flashing to slow people down as they're approaching that zone?
Uh, we have a meeting tomorrow morning. Uh, we do a weekly with, uh, KCI and the MoDOT team. On the I fifty-five project, uh, we can certainly mention it. I know they have, uh, made an effort to make sure that there are officers present when there's been a major traffic pattern shift. Most notably when Southbound sixty-seven had to start going through the roundabout. I know that day, uh, they did have a Highway Patrolman posted there at the, the beginning of the detour. Um, at least for, uh, the start of that process. And I don't think they're out there now, but at least when they. When they did make the traffic shift, they had an officer out there for a little while, but we can, we can mention to them tomorrow morning.
Okay, it's just a very congested area that is. Could be possibly prone to, uh, accidents during this time and. Maybe it's just been an oversight or someone hasn't asked. So if you would, if you would do that, I'd appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Is there any other further discussion? Is there any council member that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules? And read Bill forty-seven eighty-three for the second time and title only.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-seven eighty-three for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven eighty-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri. Enacting new sections to be numbered three-two-zero-point-zero-six-zero and three-two-zero-point-zero-seven-zero. Of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Festus regarding moving traffic violations or speeding within a construction zone. Or work zone, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances. In conflict herewith and establishing an effective date. Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven eighty-three has passed. We have Bill forty-seven eighty-four on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven eighty-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri. To establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain municipal officials.
Bill forty-seven eighty-four is now open for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please?
This is the, uh, annual. Um, ordinance that we pass, uh, for the Missouri Ethics Commission. Uh, to assure that we will disclose any potential conflicts of interest. Those are those. Statements that you have to fill out each year. Uh, the mayor and myself, uh, also have to fill one out. So just. Standard procedure.
Is there any discussion? Is there any council member that would like to have this bill? Carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read Bill forty-seven eighty-four for the second time and title only?
So moved. Second. Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-seven eighty-four for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven eighty-four, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest. And substantial interests for certain municipal officials. Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven eighty-four has passed. Also tonight, we have. Resolution forty-seven eighty-four and a half on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution number forty-seven eighty-four and a half. A resolution setting a goal of zero roadway. Fatalities and serious injuries by twenty thirty for the SS four A. Safe Streets and Roads for All Planning and Demonstration Grant.
Resolution forty-seven eighty-four and a half is now open for discussion. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes. Uh, this is part of the process for submitting for the safety funds for safe streets for all. Uh. This will be something that we. Submit as part of our packet to show commitment towards the safety for streets, whether vehicular or pedestrian. And so this is just part of the process for the submittal.
Having heard this staff report, is there any questions or discussion? There being no further discussion. May I have a motion to approve resolution number forty-seven eighty-four and a half?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven eighty-four and a half, I'm sorry, resolution forty-seven eighty-four and a half has passed. New business. We have a parade request. From. The Festus R six school district. For a homecoming parade. Friday, October fourth. Twenty twenty-four. Uh, will go from, uh, West Wind Drive, Mid Meadow Lane, Sunshine Drive. West Main to Brierton. Chief, you have any problem with it?
No, this is the annual homecoming parade that goes on every year.
Yes.
I know you have the.
Yeah.
We just pass the ordinance.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the request from the, uh. School district to have homecoming parade.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Chief Wendell, if you would let the school district know it's okay.
I will do that for you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, our second new business is a picnic license for LaChance Vineyards LLC. For a, uh. A caterer's license. For Twin City Days. On nine-seven of twenty twenty-four. The hours of their event is four PM to eleven PM. Is there any staff report?
I got a question. Barbara, they on our list to be there?
Yeah.
They are on our list? Yeah, okay.
Yeah. They are gonna be there. That's good. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. The, uh, caterers license for LaChance Vineyards LLC.
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Somebody needs to let, can you let them know it's okay?
Sorry.
Old business. Splash pad relocation.
All right, good evening. This is the circle back on the discussion we had a few meetings ago about the location of the splash pad. From the current location that's proposed right now, which is essentially where our shop sits. And moving it to Field Five. Lucas Field and basically eliminating Lucas Field completely for the splash pad and ADA playground. So. This was, uh, also approved by Park Board. For the move, so.
To, uh, to move it to Field Five?
Lucas Field and Field Five.
That's one of the small.
That's the big field. That's the big field. It's the field that is minimally used compared to the other two.
You know, you're gonna have a lot of disappointed people. There's a whole lot of people that.
Why I'm putting it in front of you.
Lot of effort into putting that field in to make it happen, so.
Well, I'm gonna tell you this, that field needs about forty to fifty thousand dollars worth of work if we do decide to move it over there. At least.
Okay.
So. And it's. It is definitely at its well, beyond its age. Either way, I just want to put it in front of you guys to, for a discussion on. You know, we're kind of at the point now where we need to pick a location for this thing. I have a contract sitting in my email right now, ready to roll. So we just need to know where we want to put it.
What's?
Hey, Josh, what, what else? I mean, okay, that's what, if that's where you think, it's fine. Is there a chance of? Doing one of the other ball field different then?
No, we'd leave those as is.
Okay.
Those are used basically daily. Six and seven are. We had Twin City Little League that used Field Five this year. That's it. By June, there ain't anybody on it. Other than just normal usage from residents or anybody that's passing through.
Is it basically since the school got their filled with, they don't, it's not used as much?
Correct.
Okay. So nobody else has really requested, I guess.
Legion plays at Hillboro.
I mean, Twin City Little League used it for their senior league. I assume this is what their league are. And I think they played dozen games on it this year from. April to. Middle of June.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's fine. If that's what you guys.
It's just. I just, if. If we're gonna get real serious about this all-inclusive playground and we want to expand on this. We're gonna be landlocked over where the proposed location is now. If we ever want to expand it, it's fine for what we have in place right now. But. We have a lot of room over there. We have lights already. We want to do any kind of night events on it. Parking's fenced. Parking, everything's there, so.
So, so Josh, if we. If we approve this, Josh, will there be any construction this year or it'll be next year?
Yes, it'll get, we'll get the ball rolling. As soon as we have a location. So we're pretty much ready to go from there. Just sign the contract and get everything lined up from there.
Thanks, Josh.
No, no, it doesn't really help with it other than. Well, I guess it actually will because we want to put a parking lot in. Unless we decide, since Mike in that meeting, we talked about. The half gravel lot that's down there. It was always the. There was always the backstory that we had to put underwater detention in and all this to be able to asphalt that. Mike said that he didn't think that was the case. He didn't understand why. So if we wanted to pave the rest of that lot down there that's been gravel for years, we could basically ship that parking lot from the. Proposed location now and take it and move it over there in the gravel. That's there.
Cool. And, and the years past, it's been a. Controversy about doing that because it was.
Because of detention, we were supposed to be able to pull the storm water off of that lot. That's why only half of it's paved and half of it's gravel.
Right. We were told there was a big utility line at one time. There were some utility issues there that. We couldn't pave it because we never could get to, we had to dig it up, so. It's my family serves me, but yeah, I think it's a good project. Get it moving.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that. Mike, you're a professional. I don't see the problem with that.
No, best case, you just leave a riparian buffer and we declare it on. His whip and we're good to go and just maintain it. I just want to make sure it's not a floodway though, right, Mark? It's in a floodplain, Greg, correct?
I'd have to look at the.
Just double check that because what popped in my head was from prior administration.
And that may have been part of the re.
If it's in a floodway.
Plane to me.
Yeah. Yeah, because would we even be able to put that walking trail there? Would we have? Oh, okay.
Sorry, forgive me. Actually, the splash pad will create a rise, but in a floodplain, you're golden.
The only time, place that I've seen that was odd, it was underwater was whenever the, uh, the box culvert. That runs on the lower pond. Head back, float, uh, and flooded the ball fields right there. But I've never seen it in that parking lot, though.
Not from the, no.
Not from the creek, no. We'll get the lower road on the other side.
Yeah.
That'll go under, but I've never seen it over there on the ball field side.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea, really.
Is there any other discussion? If not. I'll entertain a motion. To, uh. Eliminate Field Five at the complex and move the splash pad and inclusive pa- playground to that location.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thanks, everybody.
Councilman Boyer.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to. Michelle, thank you for. Fine job that you've done on the budget. And got it out earlier than usual. We're not used to that. Um. Mark Harris. Uh, John Lee contacted me over by Aspen Dental the other day and he said you'd got a letter from your department, um. On cutting that. I guess it joins both properties right there. Who's responsible for cutting that?
Sure, the, it's Aspen Dental and John Lee.
Sure, the, it's Aspen Dental and John Lee and the, uh, where barber blades come around.
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, both they are real.
Right.
The, their citizens or the property owners are responsible for maintaining the right of way. So there's kind of like a diagonal line that runs up between Aspen Dental. Aspen Dental's maintained there and John was arguing that it wasn't his property.
Didn't they cut it once? Aspen Dental cut it once there?
It's possible.
Yeah, okay. Um.
Property owners have to maintain that right way. We have ordinance on that.
Okay. And I've noticed that the BFF property there has been cut. They cut it, uh, matter of fact, yesterday. They were finishing cutting it up again. Now, with that, the owner's been notified in the past that she's got a bill to pay, right? And that goes as a lien on the property? Okay, but they, they're, do they have a running amount that she knows about? Does she have a running amount, amount on what she owes or anything? Yeah.
We do the, uh, in fact, that'll be coming up. We do the liens annually.
Okay.
So, uh, there'll be a lien from twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, twenty three, twenty four. So yes, there'd be a running amount, but the way we do it is it's assessed annually as far as abatement. Um, she'd have to inquire. I mean, we would have the total. So she could call and talk to Lee and we would be able to give her a total and that would be the amount that they'd have to pay.
Okay. Um, and then is anybody else receiving any, uh, trash pickup? Complaints?
No.
Nope. I've got, I've got a couple of them that's came in, so I don't know if there's anything that we can do about that. Talking to our people, but sometimes when they dump, they leave some trash out there in the road. And I think they're missing a few places. And then it has, a lot of this has to do with the recycling end of it, I believe. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Weiner.
Um, excuse me, just a couple of things. Um, Josh, thanks for all your help over there at the pickleball courts. Um, it's been busy over there and there's been a lot of work that's had, that's had to been done. And, uh, you and your crew are doing a really good job over there, so I appreciate that. Mr. Burger appreciates that. Everybody over there appreciates that, yeah. Um, Mike, thank you for getting back to me. I've had, uh, two or three things that, uh, I've asked, uh, Mike to do and pronto, they've been done. So I really appreciate you getting back in such a timely manner to me with that. Um, it's kind of attaboy timing away, I guess. I don't know. Hey, uh, Greg, um, I was out at the Jefferson County Bicycle Pedestrian, um, Committee the other, uh, last week sometime, and there was a lady over there inquiring about, uh, the streets in, uh, that surround the schools in Festus and blah, blah, blah. And I said, well, just go to our website and check out our capital improvements. And underneath that, you'll see about a million dollar, uh, project for safe streets that's going on. And I gave her the link and there it was. And, uh, I think that's been a great addition to the website. So thank you also for that. Um, let's see here, what else? Pretty cool thing downtown at the old Le Jade, now called the Crunt, uh, I'm sorry. The Contrarian Concert Hall and Theater. And they've got about, uh, two hundred seats in there now. Um, they, two hundred new plush seats, uh, they've redone the lighting, they've redone the sound. It's, it's beautiful in there and, uh, my wife and I went and saw Oklahoma down there with Spotlight Theater. So that was, uh, really a nice addition that, you know, things that, that, uh, Le Jade's been shut down for years down there. In essence, they've, they've had a church in there, you know, but nothing for, for the community to interact with it. So I think that's another really nice and big thing that's going on down there. They've sold out a lot of their, uh, yeah, a lot of their shows. And finally, back to the pickleball courts. I was out there last night at nine o'clock. The courts were full. Um, there are so many people going at different times of the day. But I think one inadvertent, really positive thing that's come from those courts is that when it gets, when it gets to become like eight, nine, ten o'clock at night and young people don't have anything to do, they don't have anywhere to go. Well, guess where they're going? They're going to play pickleball now and, uh, they're young people and they're there, they're having fun and, uh, they're, they're coming till later hours after that. So I think that's a great thing that we've inadvertently done with that also. And, uh, happy about that and that's all I have, sir.
All right, sir. Thank you. Councilman Dennis.
Oh, there's a lot of, lot of, uh, lot of information given to us and I, I hope we can work through everything and be able to, to do all the positive things here, uh. So when, when will we have to decide how much money we're going to be putting back? What percentage of, of money into the general fund every year is our emergency backup fund would be one question.
Uh, I can answer that right now, Kevin, if you like.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, thirty nine percent. It's set by, uh, ordinance and, uh, we haven't changed it.
So, so would that be a consideration with some of the, some of the things that we're requesting? Because we had talked about it being seventeen percent, maybe is what most cities do. Would, would that free up?
Yeah, we have no plans to bring an ordinance to council to change it from thirty nine percent unless you direct me to do so.
Well, I, I think, I think we're requesting a lot of needed things and they cost a lot of money. So, uh, would that be such a bad thing for us to examine that? Maybe, maybe change that? And could that possibly be done before we have to get our budget coming up? Because, uh, you know, some, some items are, are, are one-time hits, some items are for the rest of, rest of forever, more or less, some of the personnel and capital procedures, some of the things that we need. So would that be such a terrible idea to maybe, I know Brian brought it up, maybe look at that number so we can fulfill some of these items and, and move forward and maybe free up some funds?
If you, if you, well, and it may, it may have been a meeting, uh, that you weren't able to make, but there was a, um, a breakdown that we did during, um, a work session. I believe it may have been the last one, in fact. Uh,
Right, right.
It showed a split, uh, of what the reserve funding would be if we lowered the fund policy from
Right.
thirty nine down to twenty five and I think as low as seventeen.
Right.
The general consensus at the time, uh, didn't give me any indication that anyone wanted it to change from thirty nine. Um, but then again, I wasn't direct, I wasn't directed to bring something to change it, but I wasn't directed necessarily to bring something or not bring something to not change it, so.
Right, right.
Uh, we, we left it the way it is. I know the mayor and I discussed it. I know the mayor's preference is to leave it at thirty nine.
Right, right. And I remember that, I remember the conversation and, uh, you know, there's such a see how it all shakes out, but you know, there's some, like you said, we were to make improvements, uh, uh, to, to try to solve some of the issues in the city. Um, you know, I, I don't think that's a totally unreasonable thing. Um, like I said, this is a, this is a good time to get the budget ahead of us. We've got a lot of time to answer questions, to get working on it, so. But I think in general, we're doing a, a pretty decent job. There's a lot of things that it works. So, uh, but that's, uh, that's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Cook.
Uh, thank you, sir. Um, hey, Greg, I had a gentleman reach out to me and I hope I don't butcher this. It's Calvary Church. Um, their only handicap access for the church is to the main entrance. And there's been a couple of times that Main Street's been closed for activities and their handicapped members cannot make church services. Um, I just told him I'd bring it up for review and just have you look into it or Mark, I apologize, whoever. Um, if you can just keep that in your radar. And then on seven twenty five North Mill, I believe that the, the lady was talking about the house fire. Um, Brian, when, when can the city, when can the city basically condemn it and get crews out there to take it down and put the administrative costs on the property owner?
So my understanding is that it has already been declared unfit for human occupancy. Is that right, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I, I also understand that in addition to the prosecution case, there is also, uh, we're in the process of notifying them to clean up at least the exterior of the property. They've been giving a warning notice and I, I think a deadline to comply. And if they don't, then the city will come in and do it. Uh, as far as the actual structure of the building, there's a process set forth in our building code about what steps we need to follow. It's fairly intricate process. Um, and if it's determined from, on the basis of an inspection or something like that, that the, that the building is a, is a quote unquote dangerous building, uh, then we can give them time to either make the repairs or to, uh, or if they fail to do so and it's a danger to the public, the city can potentially tear it down. But that, um, I don't, I don't know if that process has, has been started or, or not.
Okay, so that would be a separate court situation.
Separate, yeah. The, the court process is just going to be to potentially find the owner for the violations on the property. The, um, administrative abatement process that's ongoing deals really just with the exterior of the property. If there's issues on the inside or something like that, uh, it's going to require at the very least an inspection and we'll need to, it'll need to be determined whether or not the building is structurally sound or if it's, uh, dangerous and needs to be torn down.
So things are moving forward. That's why I asked that question because I think she, the resident was speaking, didn't realize things were moving forward and, and sometimes they don't seem what they are. Um, and Greg, I saw in the librarian notes that Carla Abashawn's last day is January tenth. Is she retiring?
Yes, she is.
Good for her. And then, uh, Chief, uh, Wendell, please tell Officer Perian Pulling congratulations. I saw in your report that they've been promoted to corporal. And Greg, let's circle back because, um, that three percent gives me heartburn in the water, on the water rates. So if I can catch up within the next two weeks, I'll shut up and listen and let you beat me over the head and educate me. And then, uh, last but not least, I saw in the report too that, uh, Christian Church reached out and was offering drinks to our staff during the excessive heat. Um, if somebody can just tell them, thank you from the council. That was greatly appreciated and what a kind gesture that is. Thank you, sir.
All right, sir. Thank you. Councilman Collier.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to thank, uh, Michelle and Greg and all the department heads and that for getting the budget together for next year to get it to us so we can go over it. Uh, other than that, that's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Templeton.
Again, thanks for getting the budget out and making it easy to understand and the breakout of the different pieces because it's, there's a lot of moving parts to all of it. Uh, this question is for Chief Wendell, uh, just looking at the report, the number of checks and extra patrol. So the, the main question I've been getting is about homeless people kind of wandering, lingering in, in different places. I know we don't have a lot of places for people to go. It, does that tie into that amount there?
Those checks and extra patrols normally not. Those are extra patrols through business districts and subdivisions and things like that. Citizens are calling, requesting extra police presence, checking on something at their residence and things like that. So it's, it might have a little bit to do with the homeless issue, but it's basically doesn't have a lot to do with it.
Okay. So I, I said, it, it's a work in progress. We're trying to deal with it. And on the, uh, younger people out playing pickleball, I can tell you that those kids are there till eleven or twelve at night. And actually Barb and I talked to, uh, Chamber the other day to see if maybe we couldn't find a way to maybe have a, a, a late night tournament or something to kind of really encourage that. It's, I mean, they, they're just sitting there waiting to play. Every court is full, which is great to see. There's just not a lot for kids to do out here, so. And I didn't, I don't think we've had any increased calls for service or, or anything else. So that's definitely a win-win. So if that's something that you are interested in, let me know. I'm happy to, to help on with that. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Vins.
Uh, did a little what Jim and Stephanie said, um, stay still. Um, what, on the pickleball subject, um, what is the hours for playing late at night? Eleven o'clock? Okay. I've had a few people just ask it because it was on later than that and they were just asking like, man, it's on all the time. And, and I said, well, you see people out there and enjoy it. I said, yeah, but it just, I don't know, I guess they just see the, think the light's coming in or something. So, um, I didn't know, do they automatically shut down or you guys gotta lock it down or? And they can't go back on?
Check and make sure it's still working, but right at the very beginning of it, we had to go readjust it, but ever since then, as far as I know, I've had these.
Okay.
Alterative issues.
But nobody can turn it on?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it, it's locked out after eleven.
Okay, yeah, they, they were just kind of concerned on it and.
I'll take, I'll take it to get it in the morning, just make sure it's.
Yeah, I forgot to bring it up a week or two or whenever it was. I seen you last, but yeah, I, I, when they, he said that late step, then I. Yep. Um, Michael, thanks for you and Mark or whatever got the grass on Horine there and cut the weeds all the way to the end of the, you know, the city because that was really bad. And, uh, so I appreciate getting that because anytime these streets like that get overgrown, yeah, it makes it look bad for the city and, and it really needed attention. I appreciate that. And, um, all the way, you know? Um, I think what else was there? I supposed to go, forgotten what it was. That's it for the moment. I remember. Okay.
All right, sir. Thank you. Councilman Tenon.
Just have a couple of things. Uh, I was gonna say Main Street's looking really good. Um, I'm, I bet the complaint level is down, isn't it? Is it, is it kind of down, the complaint level? Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's looking good.
I'm surprised you led with that. I really thought, I thought you were gonna lead with how great that sidewalk around the tennis courts looks.
Well, there, there's a little issue with that, you know?
Oh, is it the finale? Okay, I ruined it. Dark.
Yeah, I was coming to that. No, I haven't been in, I haven't been, uh, getting any, uh, lectures on that, so it must be good. And, uh, let's see, now you made me forget what I was gonna say. Sorry. Uh, okay, Main Street looks good and I'm, uh, I, I know this isn't my ward, but Mike brought it up too. Seven twenty five, uh, Mill Street. Uh, I've had several phone calls. I went by and looked at it and, and yeah, it was pretty, uh, uh, yeah, it is very rough. So I'm just glad to see that something's getting done with that. Um, tennis courts look great, man. The concrete couldn't be any better. And other than that, that's all I have. So that was three. I only really had two, so, but thank you.
All righty, thank you. During our last council meeting, I made a comment at the end about the city to the east of us that was inappropriate. I have apologized directly to Mayor Osher and he has accepted my apology. I would also like to apologize to their city council and the citizens of Crystal City. That's all I have. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.